Awesome. So all of the orange or all of the areas that potentially someone could come in and add a accessory dwelling unit. An accessory dwelling unit, of course, is where there's already an established residential use and then you would be adding a second dwelling unit. There are certain standards associated, so all of these areas, all of the orange areas could also additionally be affected by this. However, there are certain limitations to this, and the biggest one is water. Any of these parcels, especially like out here on Highway 91, generally in this vicinity, anything down here, unless they are 35 acres or greater, they're only going to have, generally, they're going to have wells that can only support one household. And so the water is going to be a big limitation. Now, in the discussion down in Twin Lakes, and you don't have to switch yet to that other area yet, Bryce, but down in Twin Lakes, a lot of those properties acquired water such a long time ago that they have wells rights, ability to serve more than a single house. So when you end up in situations like the Village of Twin Lakes and some other areas that we've discovered, you end up with these very senior water right ability to, or their wells were established before the limitation of exempt wells, so prior to 1972 generally, but sometimes even older, you know, they came about in like the 50s or something like that. Sorry, I have kids at home while I'm working tonight. So there will be certain, no, not right now, there will be certain limitations to adding issues, and the biggest one will be water, but there will be some areas that are on centralized utilities. And in those areas, adding an accessory dwelling unit also potentially increases the ability to, again, check maybe some housing boxes where we don't have a lot of available housing, potentially this might be appropriate areas that we could add additional housing into. So that's, if you want to switch back now, Bryce, down south. This, I have to say that we're kind of hoping that this might achieve two different things, an opportunity to look at kind of an environmental situation when we don't have centralized utilities. Just one moment, please. Sorry. Live meetings, this won't happen in.
No worries.
I think I just gave into letting access to makeup, so this should be really fun later on. So anyway, the hope outcome of this is generally to look at ways to maybe come out with a better environmental picture in properties down in the Village of Twin Lakes and even potentially in Gordon Acres. So again, they will have to have the situation that they have these situations where their water pre-exists when exempt wells were only allowed to be serviced one household. So it's a bit of a unique opportunity, but I do think that it will have significant positive impact on the county as a whole. So this, let me, I'm gonna switch back over to the code now. And happy to hear thoughts, questions on this. Let me kind of bump it up here. This is the existing code and obviously the yellow are the new highlights. So we've come in and said, added the paragraph, accessory dwelling units on a single parcel may also be permitted by conditional review. And again, we'd be adding them conditional, so this will be on a case-by-case basis so that we could properly review them, consider things like parking impacts, anything so that we're not creating unintended consequences. They would still have to meet the dimensional standards for the zone district. They couldn't exceed maximum lock coverage, things like that. So generally, we're talking about small dwelling units that we could support through this process. Oh, thank you. Thank you. Okay, thank you. And the other is, it's not the intent of this code to place restrictions on the style and number of these ADUs in the business zone district in order to promote creative solutions to environmental challenges, although generally it is expected that two to four units in a single-family format would be a typical proposal. The expectation is that the intent of a proposal is to create an ecological and social benefit. And so it's kind of carving out kind of a unique situation, but the basis was trying to find an environmentally better outcome than we are able to achieve right now.
So is this saying that the only way you get a conditional use permit for an ADU is in the business zone district is if there's an environmental hazard or environmental advantage?
So if there's an environmental or social benefit, and so I think that we're going to change the social benefit again to that workforce or a housing benefit. And a housing benefit is going to be pretty easy to find, but we also wanted to really, you know, it was really important to kind of look at the environmental impact and benefit. So I think that the social would be adjusted. I'm really, this is kind of difficult to determine. And I think the reason that we want to kind of limit ADUs in the business zone district to a certain degree. This one, this one I keep going back and forth on, like I want to, I don't know if the environmental impact or the environmental outcome has to be a condition because the standard itself has to be approved by public health. So maybe that's enough. So the expectation, I think we got, I got a little carried away in wanting to kind of explain why that maybe it doesn't need to be a condition of approval because there's already a standard associated with accessory dwelling units that they must meet water and sewer requirements and have a sign off on water and sewer. So that may be enough and maybe, you know, like if some places in centralized water and sewer, maybe the merit of the benefit is brought through the conditional review and it doesn't necessarily need to be communicated in the code. So it might have been a little bit of oversharing about the creation because the code may control it anyway, if that makes sense.
Well, that was kind of my question. I know Joey has his hand raised too, but in initially looking at this, I was thinking, well, why not just, I mean, what's, what would be the, I guess, what would be the negative impact of allowing an ADU in the business zone district? And part of that, part of my reasoning behind that was going to come up in our next discussion, but I'm, I'm almost of the mindset, and we don't have to go into this right now, that ADUs should only be allowed to be, should not be allowed to be used as a short-term rental. So then you're looking at them being, just ADUs are known to be a really quick and faster way to create more units in a, in a community. So I personally can't think of what the, in a business zone, like you were saying earlier, that's so high density, what the downfall would be because they would have to have water that allows it and they would have to have septic that allows it. So what would be our downfall to allowing an ADU in the business zone district at all? And then eliminating maybe all of this language and just making up an ADU conditional or whatever in the business zone district and not go in, because to me, it gets really confusing because I would think originally without knowing the situation in Twin Lakes that this is the opposite. You're allowing more units now to a piece of property that has no septic system big enough for it. Right? And so to me, this language like just is super confusing. I'm like, wait, so because they don't have a big enough septic system for their house, they now want the ability to put an ADU, but really it's because we're talking about combining two properties, but that just gets really muddy. And so I guess my question would be, can we just, if there's not a lot of opposition to allowing an ADU to be conditional use and I guess I even would question if it needs to be conditional use, but if we allow an ADU in business, do we need this language? At all?
What you think, Heather? Good point.
I think it's a good point. And so we, we only make accessory dwelling units currently under conditional use if you're, if you're going to have one in less than an acre. So Twin Lakes lots would hit that box and so would other small lots. So again, yeah, I think that maybe this code is trying to tell the why too much and it's, we may all understand the why and it doesn't need to be. The only, the only caveat about this is the standard accessory dwelling unit code only allows one accessory dwelling unit. It doesn't add more than one. And there are some cases in the village where it would be beneficial to have three homes because they are very small and there might be, so it would be pushing the envelope of just, you know, code only allows one. And so that would be the only difference. So as we're looking through this, I think very good point that all ADUs have to have water and acceptable water and sanitation. All of the ADUs have to have parking, all, you know, we have our standard set of requirements for ADUs. And so a lot of this is redundant, but the one item that might not be is that there might be an opportunity to have more than a single ADU. And so maybe that's the bigger out, that maybe that's the biggest difference.
Okay, Joey, sorry, go ahead.
No, not at all. And you had mentioned, and you mentioned again, some of these parcels, these are existing parcels with existing dwellings that we're speaking about for the most part, and there's been a rather large explosion in the village itself of short-term rentals relatively recently. And it mentioned between two and four ADUs based on existing properties. What is the opportunity of potentially limiting short-term rentals on these? In other words, if you had more than one, or if you had more than two, then some percentage would have to be required as long-term rentals rather than short-term rentals. Is there a way to add language that would add to our, add to helping our housing and limit these short-term ADU, at least limit the exploitation of the short-term rentals in some of these places? Is that something that we could add?
I think that's a great point. And the one thing that I just wanted to, because I had thought about that as well and I'd like to get, that's one point, both of these code amendments I will be sending to legal for legal review, just to make sure there's nothing that I haven't thought about, is that short-term rentals are allowed in all zone districts. We're gonna, we're gonna go into kind of just, I think, just starting a discussion on, Commissioner Mudge had asked to put a discussion on short-term rentals on the agenda and she can't be with us this evening. So I just wanted to kind of open that up and talk about that maybe coming up. So the only thing that I wonder is if we say that, because, so short-term rentals, if you condition, so if something comes in under an acre that's going to have to have a conditional use permit and through the conditional use permit, you condition it that it cannot operate as a short-term rental. I just want to make sure that there's no legal hiccup in conditioning, and maybe you know this, Heather or Howard, have you ever issued a conditional use permit where you disallowed something that the code allows as a use by right?
We have, but probably not legally. I mean, I just remember that in the past that like there's been some conditions that have passed, maybe a little bit more in the Bud era that we're like, well, we're conditioning this. And it was like, I don't know if we can be, but if the applicant agrees to it in the hearing, then technically it just becomes part of their application. So I think that's usually how we did it. I think, so I think we have two things here and I almost think we need to sit with them separately a little bit. And the first one is, so we need, so in the code on any zone district, if it's less than an acre, it's a conditional use permit on every zone district other than like I am or something. Okay. So if, so how does it, how does that look on the use table?
Let me see if I can.
It just says A or it says C under them?
Just a minute, let me see if I can find that really quick. And so it's got an A slash C.
Oh, okay. So I think my, my initial question then is that almost all of these parcels we're talking about that is the why we're talking tonight are under an acre, which is why they have an issue. So I think my question number one is, do we need to have all of this information, these extra paragraphs in here other than for the number of them, which I feel like could be solved by just a super simple sentence under business district that if it creates some sort of social or environmental, I forget what you, what word you used and my words aren't working, but benefit, then we could consider more than one through that conditional use permit process in the zone, in the business zone district. Maybe just have that one sentence and get rid of all the rest of this and make ADUs the exact same as they are everywhere else, allowed slash conditional. And then second thing that we're talking about is the STR, the short-term rental piece, which Sarah did talk to us briefly about at the last meeting so that we could have a little bit of a discussion tonight. I do have to leave at, by 5:45. My daughter's awesome and she has an awards night tonight, so I gotta go to that. But I would love to still dive into that conversation just a touch so that we can talk about what we think our game plan is. But this was one thing I wanted to bring up and, you know, to Joey's point, like, I question whether we would, if, whether people, and I realize this will be a fight somewhat, but if, if folks are interested in pursuing the idea that all ADUs in the county have the same rule that they cannot be short-term rentals. And then you no longer are saying it only works through the condition, conditional use piece. It's, if you have an ADU on your property, you don't, it's not for a short-term rental. That's not the goal of the community. I mean, if, if we've got the idea right now to go through the fight of capping short-term rentals, I would vote that we do things like this first, such as say, no more ADUs can be used as short-term rentals. You know, and then you're, and then you're doing it across the board for all of them and you're no longer worrying about, are we picking and choosing people based on their situation? So those are my two thoughts that I would love to get other people's thoughts on as well.
No, that's very true. You're eliminating the fight before it gets started. That's a good way to go.
I guess I would just like to have that analysis and look at those numbers. Like, do we, do we actually knows, like, what would be the end? Like, what is our impact? So.
I like the idea of banning short-term rentals in these ADUs in general, but especially in the business zone district. I think that goes a long way to addressing, you know, maybe some of the concerns that the Twin Lakes Village people would have with this going through. So definitely in the new, if we're going to allow ADUs in the business zone district, which I think is a good idea, especially for the reasons you've laid out, makes sense to not allow them to be short-term rentals. And yeah, like we're all saying, I think it makes sense to extend that countywide just to eliminate that before we even start the broader discussion on caps.
I agree also. This is the time to do it.
Well, I'm just wondering if we're already amending this code, if that is, you know, and that'll be something, Anne. Sorry, I probably cut somebody off. Go ahead.
No, 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 I was, I just said this is great information.
And how do folks feel about the getting rid of the environmental paragraphs in here and just saying ADUs are conditional or AC, just like all the other zone districts? Does everybody feel like that makes sense? I see Bryce has a thumbs up.
If I can address, there are a couple of properties that I'm familiar with in Twin Lakes Village where the environmental aspect is the sole, well, is, is the main reason for making these changes. So I don't know that we want to completely eliminate the environmental. There are several houses in Twin Lakes built without houses or pit systems. And the only way that you can get current septic systems or the only way you can get really appropriate septic systems is by combining these properties and being able to share a septic system. There's just no other way to do that other than making some of these houses useless. So I don't know that we want to completely eliminate that. That truly is a justification for some of this change.
Yeah, I think what I was trying to say is that if it's, right now, they're not allowed at all in the business zone district. And so if we change it to where now they are allowed on an acre or more, or they go through a conditional use permit if it's under, which this language was still requiring, if they have environmental need, then I guess I'm thinking in my, my head that that would be their main purpose coming to us with a conditional use permit is like, this is why you should approve us. And that's when we would be like, yes, we agree. And I just am wondering if it needs to be just like we don't have all the other reasons why you should be given an ADU in here. I just am wondering if we need this to be as spelled out in here. I think that it gives them easily a very quick way to get approved. I just question, to me, it almost looks like that's the only way you get approved and it's a lot of detail that kind of gets confusing to read. So that was, that was my only reason for saying, well, we switch it to where it's treated just like everywhere else. And then if you have a good reason for, for coming forward with a conditional use permit application on your, for an ADU, such as environmental or social or whatever those, those things are, then it adds to that. I don't know.
Yeah, that's a very good point.
Well, and keeping in mind the part of the code that I don't think I've queued up on it, on here, well, maybe I actually do, just a minute, is that, yep, here we go. So all ADUs have to, when they go through conditional, they have to have a water supply that is adequate. They have to have a sewer system that's been properly permitted. And so you know, you can talk about within an application, the merit of the outcome is a better environmental picture. But we already have a standard that says, you know, it has to meet the sewer and water. So I think, I think what everybody's alluding to is it's a little bit of redundancy as well as sending potentially a message that that's the only basis by which you would be allowed and it wouldn't be the only. So yeah, I see where, and I was already feeling that. I was already feeling like, you know, kind of overtelling the story within the code and getting a little carried away. And so I like the simplification of that. And then I think the only other thing that I think I heard, which totally resonates with me, is just leaving in something for the possibility of consideration of, you know, although generally is expected that two or four units in a single family, you know, that the ability in the business to consider more than just one, which the current code only allows for. So that would be the sole kind of, you know, taking out generally everything in here except that in the business zone district, there might be an environmental reason why it would make sense to allow more than one. Is that?
Yeah, and not that I can think of a way that it would happen in another, just because Twin Lakes is so unique with that situation out there. But if there were, I mean, I guess I'm wondering if we, if we have that sentence that additional units could be considered if there are environmental or social impacts, do we want to just have that be a blanket statement for all of the ADUC, conditional use permits? Just in case there's an ADU situation on a lot that, you know, I don't know, is in the residential and somehow that's going to provide some really great housing opportunity. I don't, I mean, things we can't really think of, but that, I guess I'm just wondering if we want, if we don't need to limit that sentence to just that, that it'll, it'll be again, a conditional use conversation and not a for sure that you get to have more than one ADU, but it all depends on if there's social and environmental benefits to do that. Does that make sense?
My first thought, Heather, is I like it because it keeps code consistent through all districts and the, you know, the criteria below, it really already kind of bets the use, if you don't have adequate water, if you don't have adequate sewer. So a lot of the big items have been addressed and then it keeps, it's an easier code for the public to understand as well as to administer when we have consistency in all zone districts. So my first thought is that that makes things more consistent throughout. And my other two takeaways is, and we, I know we haven't gotten into short-term rental discussion too much yet, but I was hearing from everyone additionally, that it will be good to come back with, and this will lead into our next discussion. So I just want to say, and then make sure we don't have any more questions about this. We'll come back with a report of identifying what of the short-term rental licenses that we currently have that are being held by what would be qualified as an accessory dwelling unit. So we could see, I think Abby, you had brought up, let's consider what that impact looks like. Another really important thing, we will be sending this code amendment to the communities, you know, to the friends of Twin Lakes. We want their input put on it as well, since this is intimately affecting them and we want to make sure that we hear from them and what they think. I did have a discussion with the friends at Twin Lake briefly about it and I didn't hear any opposition, but I think it'd be really great to make sure that it's get through for doubt. And then as we have the short-term rental conversations, especially if, you know, if we're going to, probably just need to make sure that we're doing engagement so that we, we hear, you know, any opposing ideas if they exist.
And they inevitably will.
Yeah, I think it's, it's, I like the consistency and the simplification of it because I think this is the stuff that could really scare a homeowner in, just on its, on its face without that explanation. So I feel like if anything, Anne, you're already like halfway through writing a staff report with some of the content that you had above, so.
Any other questions for Anne on this specific ADU conversation before we move into the short-term rental conversation? Everybody's good. Thanks, Anne, for putting it together. It's good.
Sure. All right. I have got, thanks to John. Yeah, John, I have, and I think you, we do have, he just updated the spreadsheet that I sent you before. So let me make sure I get this. So there are some changes there. I think there's three new licenses in the Village of Twin Lakes and two new licenses in West and two new licenses in West Park. So we'll get these news spreadsheets out to everyone to have, you know, conversations. But, you know, it sounds like the first proposal maybe in these discussions is to consider making accessory dwelling units not eligible as short-term rentals. And, but we can look through and identify which of the current licenses are currently held in that manner and then report back on the ninth. We can email that information ahead of the meeting. And then so we have it as a talking point. But that might be a really effective way of managing, you know, accessory dwelling units and, and incentivizing if there's supplemental income that's beneficial into some long-term rental opportunities.
Did you say that you sent this out to us?
Yes, you have.
I, I might have, I might have just missed it. Was it like in a packet with other stuff, maybe?
Um, yeah, I think.
Did other people grab it?
I think it was after the, it was two meetings ago when I was just kind of going through upcoming things.
Okay, I'll look for it.
But I will, but I will send it out again after tonight's meeting because it has done, updated it for us this afternoon. So I will send it out, but it's just great because if you haven't seen it yet, you did an amazing job of just going through and these are general locations, of course, anybody's, it's from with mapping and just giving us an idea. So it's really nice because it creates a super visual to kind of see where the concentrations are, where this, you know, if there is possible saturation, where it is. And so that you can kind of take a look and just the, the location and, and kind of give you an idea. We also update the website with all the current licenses so that if you ever have any questions about that. But John has done an amazing job on not only compiling all the data in a very usable format, but also in doing compliance, being very diligent in working the compliance program. And so I would say that I think we only have less than a handful of non-compliant properties that are currently advertising. So I would say we're pretty proud of our compliance.
So, um, the last meeting for, I think most everybody was there, but Sarah kind of just touched a little bit on, on why she added this to kind of our conversation agenda. And, and she alluded a bit towards wanting us to consider going through the cap process similar to the city. I have thought a lot about, in, in, I just want to take a minute to share my own thoughts, then I want everybody to share their own thoughts. But I thought a lot about that. And first of all, I was a part of the city stuff for the two and a half years, maybe three years that they talked about it. And that sounds absolutely terrible to me to go through the two years. And I, being in the business I'm in, I just worry that it didn't produce enough of a result to warrant two years of, of very focused effort on a cap. I, I, I'm a believer in balance for short-term rentals and long-term rentals. And I think what's most unbalanced right now is the ratio of homeowners versus second homeowners. And that's quite a bit different than vacation rentals and, and, and not. So I worry a little bit about that, but there are a couple of instances that I thought of the other day that I thought, well, maybe first is the ADU. I, I have always been super strong feeling that if somebody adds an additional income property to their property, then ADU is the perfect long-term rental. Like it is, you either have a, a single person or a couple generally, and they need workforce housing. And it's the perfect size typically those ADUs, and it's just the perfect long-term rental scenario for folks. So I'm a, I'm a strong believer in the ADU thing. And then I was driving by Eagles Nest Apartments the other day and seeing them put all those new decks on. And I remember that either this current owner or the owner before, or maybe both, had considered for a long time turning at least half of those units into condos instead of apartments. Same was true for the owners of the Mount Massive Manor. Or is it Mount Massive Manor? I don't know. The Mount Massive Apartments at the end of Mount Massive Drive. And that would be devastating, I think, if we lost those apartment complexes to condos or not, no longer, no longer rentals, right? That would be very devastating. So I think one thing I wanted to, to bring up as ideas that I have towards making steps for affordable housing are three things. One is the ADUs not being short-term rentals. The second one being that we look at either multifamily zone district or I don't know that we could do it property-specific. I don't know that Mount Massive is in a multifamily zone district. But anyway, if there's a way that we can target those kind of areas that we don't want there to be short-term rentals because the idea for multifamily zoning was for primary residents, then I would like to eliminate the possibility of short-term rentals in those zone districts. And then my third is that instead of spending two years on a cap is being given the permission to spend hopefully less than that, but possibly two years on a real live project in trying to find a developer using county land, using county infrastructure and actually try to get a project going. Because my own frustration is just that we're in all these groups that keep talking about it. And everybody says, well, that's going to take two years to build. And now we're two and a half years into the conversation and we just didn't approach it in the beginning because it was going to take too long. So that's my three things that I wanted to present to the group. And now I would love to hear other people's thoughts on their own ideas and/or those. Thanks. Bryce, go ahead.
Yeah, I'll go. Great job on the mapping. I think this is really incredible and it looks very detailed and kind of goes a long way to visualizing just how many short-term rentals we have in the county. And so I think my personal belief is I lean towards a cap. I know it was a painful process in the city and I know it hasn't been 100% effective. But it's about the message and it's about incentivizing development and money to where we want it to. And right now, I think we just have a crazy short-term rental problem because people would rather spend their money on a house that they can short-term rental rather than invest that money into a proper, long-term lodging solution that produces tax money and is charged as a commercial entity instead of these residential tax rates that these, uh, short-term rental people get the benefit of. That's what really bothers me is they, they pay four times less tax in their per dollar value than a hotel does. So, you know, it just kind of incentivizes the wrong behavior. So I'm all in favor of anything that can, even, even like the Federal Reserve does, right? We can signal that we're going to do something about this and that we're working on it. Maybe it's not perfect, maybe it'll take a while. But I think this can be done in conjunction with working on an affordable housing project as well. You know, I've just had some interesting thoughts though about the ADU. Like I know the city allows folks to rent out Airbnbs inside their own house. And I wonder if there's some sort of compromise, like if the owner is also an occupant of the property, could they rent out the ADU as a single or as a short-term rental because they're already occupying the main residence or something like that? If there's some sort of middle ground there besides just banning all ADUs as short-term rentals. But yeah, I really think that we really should address the short-term rental in some aspect. I think the compliance is huge and I think that's a really good step forward. But it's, it's pretty, pretty extreme. And that's the, the second homeowners, a lot of second owners, they say, well, I can have a vacation home, but at the same time, if every time I'm not using it, I can rent it out all the time. And so I think it's, it's both. It's not just short-term rentals versus second homeowners. It's kind of a mixed problem there. So those are my thoughts.
Yeah, you know, my, my goal on, or talk on the short-term rentals go way back when they first started. And I think Heather kind of remembers this when I used to argue about them probably 10 years ago before it got to be the problem it is right now. I was looking at, at a little different aspect then. In fact, I even took it to the, when I was an assessor, I took it to the state conference one year. The fact that, you know, a guy's got a short-term rental and he's doing a lot of things that's not good for the county. Number one is something I think is very fair. If you have a short-term rental and you got it parked right next to the guy who's got a motel, you're doing the same thing he is, except your assessed value is, is figured at the residential rate as 7% or so, but the poor guy's got the motel is 29%. So there's a big, big difference there. Unfortunately, at that, at that conference, I had all of the resort towns on my side. But we got the lobbyist argued against it because year before he had taken the condo condominiums to, to the, he was, he was representing us on condominiums and he lost. And he said he's not going to chance these and lose that too. And I think the bigger counties would have, they made us lose, period. But, you know, when, and also, Anne, I wonder if you'd send these again. I, I don't think, if we've got them, I sure didn't notice them. But I think that's one heck of a good job that, that John has done getting this put together like that. The other thing on the short-term rentals, of course, is their, is them and single, not single family, but the, the second homeowners. I'd be interested to know what the percent of outs, people from out of the county are owning these short-term rentals and the single-family residences. What that percentage is, it's got to be awful high. I haven't looked at any of the numbers for a long time. But I don't think that's good for a county. That's my comments.
Yeah, I can jump really quick into just in my own experience as far as work goes. They, the majority of them are owned by second homeowners. And, you know, and that's because, so I would say the average nights that you can rent a short-term rental right now in our community is 65 nights a year. That's a lot of dead season. So if you're going to own a piece of property, you're not typically going to be like, oh, I want to make money. So therefore I'm short-term renting it. It's because it's your second home and you're using it also. Because if you're looking at it from investment perspective, you'll make more money as a long-term rental all day long. And so, and I think that that's where, why, in my opinion, it hasn't necessarily, the cap hasn't necessarily freed up housing. I agree with the message and, and all of that, but is because they're, now they're second, those second homeowners still want to use their property. They didn't use that income to get the house. They didn't need that income to get the house. It was just something that helps them pay for maintenance. So our problem is that we have a ton of second homeowners that now have decided Ludville is their sweet, their sweet spot. But if they're going to use the house themselves as well, they're not going to long-term rent it. That wouldn't work for them. So a lot of times what the restriction does is it just says, okay, well, we'll just shut down the house, not pay utilities for all of those months, all the times we're not there and so forth. So it takes that piece out, takes that away. I think there's the, the percentage of buyers and/or second homeowners that it would eliminate with taking away the short-term rentals is so small that not, not that I disagree with it, I just don't know that the, that the fight makes it create something enough, especially in the county. But that's, but yeah, I mean, we're seeing those numbers, I would guess that they've got to be in the 90%ths are second homeowners that own these vacation rentals because it, like I said, it's just not super equitable to do it as a primary owner and own a house and turn it into a short-term rental unless you're needing it for yourself or family or, I don't know, something like that. So just as far as my experience over the last 15 years doing it. Bryce has, or I, I think Bryce was next with his hand up or Joey. I can't remember who was next. Sorry.
No, sorry.
It's you.
Very good point, Heather. Thank you.
Thanks.
Heather, I understand your argument about the process and the fight that's involved, but I think we're sending a bad precedent with limits in the city and not limits in the county. Since we are the only city in the county, it's a, it seems like limits would really be the right way to go there. That's a, and, and you're right, it's, it's at least 90% second homeowners right now. It's a pretty incredible. Oh, and, and I'm sorry, but I didn't receive that either. So please do resend.
I must have, I must have dreamed that I did. I could have swore after our, our, kind of our situational meeting I did. So I must not have and better.
I got it. I'm the, I'm the one, but I got it.
Okay, so I'll send it out again. I'm happy to, since it's up to date and what a great resource. I echo everybody's thoughts. John did a fantastic job on this. It continues to do a fantastic job on it.
The only thing I'll, I mean, I think, I think it just begs further conversation just because like already there's been like a lot of really good points. And I think, I think it's just like thinking through, like, what do we want the makeup of the community to be down the road? I just don't, it's, it's a, it's pretty insane to see just what home values have done and like, and then knowing that, you know, even folks that commute to neighboring communities that have higher AMIs. Like, I mean, I had a coworker the other day, I work for, for neighboring county. So I had a coworker the other day that, you know, I could cash out and sell my home in Eagle Vale. But then I can't even, then I, you know, Ludville's not, not the backup plan anymore. I think, I think a lot of, you know, Eagle River Valley or Summit County, you know, that was always the thing that, that residents could kind of hold there or at least have as a backup, I guess. Although obviously Ludville and Lake County shouldn't be a backup in my opinion. But, um, yeah, I, I think, I think, yeah, certainly like having the understanding of the amount of ADUs. And then, again, I guess going to my work experiences, the, the caps are hard. But I think it, it's a signal to, to developers and to people interested that, that could be a deterrent. You know, you know, the flexibility without a cap could encourage folks to maybe buy a second home here just knowing that they could potentially do more. But on the flip side, like actually, I don't know, it's a balance. So may, I mean, hopefully nothing takes two years to have a conversation around. But, but I think we probably need a few more sessions to really consider.
Yeah, and maybe, and I'm sure you're doing this, Anne, but maybe. So to me, the reason the short-term rental conversation is here is because we're thinking about affordable housing and our housing prices just in general and the lack of it. And it could apply to short-term rentals or not. And this was something before we even brought up the short-term rental conversation that I was hoping to bring to this group. As far as an idea is if, if folks would be willing to think about some different ideas or strategies and if that's to address the housing concern. I know that we have housing groups working on this, but, and I'm, and I'm not, I'm not saying that we don't continue working with those groups, but I think it would be nice for us to also have a plan of where we see some priority projects. So if it's like, hey, my idea of something that we could do is simplify this in the code and that would suddenly open up all this great housing opportunity, like, I don't know, right? But if it's something that the planning commission can do, whether it's through code or through development process with the county, whether it have to do with short-term rental, whether it have to do with zoning, whether it have to do with the development process, something like that. I just wonder if this group should bring forward their ideas and we then sit down and. I just wonder if this group should bring forward their ideas, and we then sit down and as part of this conversation say. All of these are awesome ideas. All of them could impact our housing crisis right now. What are the ones that we feel like are a priority to tackle? And what does this group really want to focus their efforts on over the next several years? You know, is it? Is it X or is it Y or is it all of these things? You know, what is it? And. Obviously, understanding that we have to bite off a bunch of applications in the middle, but. I I think it would be really good for this group to kind of be forward-thinking that way of like. Rather than waiting for an idea to come to us and say, yes, we want to, we want to do that because that sounds great. I would love to like, see if we can compile a list of ideas of things that we think this group can work on. One of the things that we brought up before that may not look like it directly impacts housing is, we talked about this before during Angel View. Subdivision process was, do we need to look at the at the current zoning map and make sure that our densities? And all of those are accurate. Are they? Do they portray what we want? Our future Ludville to look like and the makeup of that? Do does it? Does it do that? Do we look at certain things being allowed in certain zone districts and not in others more so than we already do? And that could be something like short-term rentals. Like, there are lots of things that I feel like are are. More well-versed to us than some of the people that maybe outside of this group in. And we can really dive into our code a little bit more and or zoning system and say. Wow, I feel like if we made these couple of tweaks or we really looked at this as a project, and sure, it may take some time, but it could be. You know, really beneficial in the end. I I just would love to see if if the creative juices of this group could come together and. Kind of come up with some different ideas that they would love to see that could address the housing crisis. I don't think we're going to fix it, fix it, but I think we can do things to help it and help make sure that our future level is the way we want it to look, even though it will still be. Only as big as it is. So I don't know if people feel pretty good about that as an idea of maybe another work session where between now and then you really think of. Your own thoughts and whether it's things we've already talked about tonight or whether it's new ideas and and try to then have just kind of a. Throw-up session at the next work session about here's a bunch of ideas or we can send them to Anne in the meantime. In that way, we can just kind of spend the night talking through some various ideas and over the next few work sessions. Work out a priority plan for the planning commission. Which ones do we think we can tackle? Which ones do we think are priorities? What do people think about that?
That's a great idea. And just to confirm, Anne, that. Affordable housing incentive code amendment is up for review next week.
The that one is set for the public meeting is the 23rd, but I wanted to. You could just make those kind of potential revisions that we talked since tonight about workforce adding those. So we have one more work session on the 9th, and we actually.
Okay, because yeah, I think that is an awesome thing to get going right away, because then, like you were saying, Heather, you know, we're biting off and chewing applications, but at least we're being proactive and. Contributing in some way while we're doing that, while we think of other solutions too.
I just went down like, sorry, my Gmail. Like when I did my master's thesis, it was on workforce housing, and so I'm trying to find if. If there's anything applicable or helpful. But that was a very long time ago, and the conditions have changed dramatically, so. But but I'll share it if I find it of merit.
That that's great. I mean, I welcome, and I I think that all sounds great because. You are the keepers of the code. You are the code experts, this group. I mean, I deal in code every single day. And you know, tonight you helped me get the very best version, I think, of both of these codes because of your expertise and knowledge of it. And so there's nobody better to be looking at how to create opportunities. Like how they're described, so I would absolutely. Reiterate what Heather said and and encourage you all to know that, you know, you are the experts locally. To bring things to fruition and ideas forward to make sure that we're coming at this in in a very collective collaborative. Method, because there's not going to be one silver bullet that fixes it all, but coming at it from a. Many different ways will hopefully start to make some change and some difference. I can do a quick recap for you, Heather. I know you're going to need to go. Would you like me to do that real quick? So my takeaways of that, our next meeting is Monday. So sorry about the back-to-back meetings or weeks. Back-to-back is in weeks. So Monday, tonight, I will, well, it'll actually probably be tomorrow. I will be sending you the staff report on the subdivision exemption, just so everybody, everyone remembers what that is. There is a legislative ability. For or there is a power given to the Board of County Commissioners. To consider certain divisions of land exempt from subdivision regulations. And so this. Application is making a case based on some errors that were made when it was originally plotted, and they believe it's the basis for consider for that considerations. These have to be very unique situations that are not trying to circumvent the subdivision process. And so they are seeking an exemption, and that is the basis of the application that I'm going to send to you. Or you all have the application. It's been online, but we'll send you the staff report tomorrow, so that you have plenty of time to go through this, because I know. Some members, this will be their very first time doing a subdivision exemption, and so I just wanted you to have plenty of time to review that before Monday. After that hearing is over, hoping to bring these two new versions forward, both on the adding accessory dwelling units to this is on district. And the affordable slash workforce. You know, some new wordsmithing, send to me any comments that you have in between here and there, and we'll have a new version to look at afterwards. And then I think after that is time allows, I know that might be quite a bit to get into squeeze into two hours. If there's time, maybe we could do some goal setting on. Also, we'll try to come with information on the impact of if we just disallowed. STRs to the accessory dwelling units and and tell you what that currently would impact our numbers. Bring that information forward, and then maybe from there we could set a further discussion on. Short-term rules as well as other housing solutions. Does that sound like a good work plan?
Sounds good.
Sounds good.
Great. Oh, one other quick update. I just wanted to let you know I have scheduled. A RM, another. Multifamily rezone to RC June, your first meeting in June, I think that's 13th of June. Applications that are coming up will be. We do have a conditional use permit for an accessory dwelling unit. We are going to have the Bureau of Reclamation is redoing their mine drainage treatment plant. That will be a conditional use permit, site plan and a variance. So we have, oh, the variance, excuse me, and we'll go to the Board of Adjustment. But you will have a conditional use permit and a site plan on the BOR project. We also, of course, have the site plan review that I sent you today or yesterday or today. For the scenic conservation overlay, it does, I did hear back from CDOT today, and it looks like they look for what. The board, what the planning commission finds first, and then they'll have to go through a process with CDOT because they are in the scenic byway as well. So they don't have, it doesn't seem like they have any immediate concerns about the overhead power line. But they will wait for the applicant to go through their process once they've been, their application has been heard locally. So, okay, that was my last quick update. Oh, and just if anyone wants to attend, we're adopting new building code. We have a town hall meeting Thursday, 6 to 8. At CMC in the Pinnacle Building, room 317. And so that and then there's a joint work session. Between the city and the county on building codes, May 10th, and we're taking this to the board for adoption, May 24th. And if you're interested in any of those dates, I'll send you calendars and but I will make sure that you're all included on the housing guideline. Discussions and and how to access those meetings.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Anne before we? Turn it off? All right. Do I have a motion to adjourn for the evening?
I'll move. We adjourn.
Second.
Okay, all in favor. Hi. Hey, thank you, everybody. Have a great night.
Have a good night.
Thank you.